Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manaus Economic Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the code which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start tonight, I'd like to thank Alderman Sevenek for filling in for me last week. Appreciate him, oh, two weeks, yeah. Appreciate him doing that for us and keeping the meetings running while I was ill. Clark Krupkramer, could we have the roll, please?
Alderman Nichols. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenek. Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Tomgrotty.
Here.
Alderman Tedgrotty.
Here.
Alderman Repela.
Yes.
First item on the agenda tonight is the COVID-19 update by Director McKinney.
Good evening, everybody. So I'd like to give you a snapshot of our most recent data, and I'm comparing it to the August 3rd data, so it's actually today. We've had 1,066,040 tests that are negative for this state of Wisconsin, 66,196 positive, 5,320 hospitalized, 1,039 deaths, 8,537 or 13% active cases, and 56,602 recovered cases. In the city of Manaus, we currently have 2,665 people who have tested negative, and so we've had more tests, as you can see, in comparison to August 3rd. We have 145 total positive cases, and that's up from August 3rd. Five people have been hospitalized, and we have had sadly one fatality, one death, which was reported last week. We have 12 current active cases in comparison to 21 on August 3rd, and we have 133 people who have recovered. It's about 91% of our total cases. And then our contact investigations, and this is noteworthy, today are 81 people, so we're, we have 81 close contacts that we're following up with in comparison to 43 the last time we met. Calumet County has had 7,051 negative tests, 402 positives, and two deaths. Outagamy County has 28,330 negative tests, 1,401 positives, and 14 deaths. Winnebago County, 30,168 negative tests, 1,288 positives, and 19 deaths. Just a couple updates for you. The Wisconsin Army National Guard testing site at UW Fox Cities in Manaus went very successfully. We actually ordered up 500 tests for that and ended up adding 100 additional tests the Friday before, and when the testing site went up, we had over 200 cars in line and ordered up another 150 tests for a total of 750 tests. It started at 10:00 in the morning, and it went, was supposed to go through 6:00. I got a call about quarter after 5:00 that we had already completed all the tests we could. Their capacity is 750. So we had a very successful day. We're still getting results of all of the tests in other sites, the Sunnyview Expo Center and their fairgrounds down in Chilton. So that's been a very good collaborative project between all of the health departments and the county emergency managers, and I just want to give a shout out to UW Oshkosh Fox Cities campus, especially Vice Chancellor Martin Rudd and also Trent Martin, who is part of their police department. Our police department was also on hand to offer support and work with traffic. It was just a very good collaborative effort. So thank you to everybody. As you know, we added weekly summaries to our daily case counts, and this is aligning our metrics with our neighbors in the state. Our reporting periods are Wednesday through the following Tuesday, so our reports will be updated each Wednesday, and it's bound on the City of Manaus Health Department website under COVID-19. So laboratory confirmed tests, this is in comparison to the previous week reporting period, so we're looking at July 15th to the 28th in comparison to July 29th through August 11th. So we drop off a week every time we do a report on our weekly metrics. So this past reporting period, we had 33 confirmed cases, and our rate per 100,000 people, which is how the state looks at this, is 188.5 per 100,000 people. Our trajectory is obviously going up, so we're categorized as high, and you can see the previous week, we had 21 confirmed cases and then 119.5 per 100,000. So these last, this last reporting period, we are up into the high range. And then again, if you're looking at what we need to be at, we actually, to be in the lowest range, we want to be equal to 10. We're at 188, so you can see why that case count is high. Case rate is greater than 100 to be high. Also, the general cases themselves, to be in the low range, we want to be less than two cases per two-week period. We are at 33, so that puts us firmly in the red. And just a couple weekly data summary reports for this last reporting period. As I just explained, we're high and the activity level is high. Our rate is 188.5 cases per 100,000. It's an increase. So if you look at breaking it down a little bit, we're looking at children age 0 to 19, and that accounted for about 25% of the 33 new lab confirmed cases in this reporting period. This same age group accounts for about 12% of our whole cumulative total. So we are able to contact all of our confirmed cases within 24 hours, which is something else we have looked at, and we're on track to hire contact tracers and a testing coordinator that will help us to manage the disease and contact investigations. Again, we're still looking at those daily metrics, although we're looking at August 12th's measures because we've had some people on vacation, so we'll be updating these on our website soon. You've looked at this with me before. We look at the positive test results as a percent of the total tests, and then we average that across a 14-day period. It's at 7.73 right now. We want it to be below 5%, so we're looking for that to get a little lower. I think with the mask order and people in compliance and also getting more tests available to everybody, we'll hopefully see this start to come down. Our epidemiology, that's the number of cases. Again, we want to be below two cases in a 14-day period. We're at 33. That's high. It's in the red. And then adequate testing, well, because I think we had the Wisconsin Army National Guard site, we are up over 30.5. That puts us in the green, but we have been in the green now for the last two reporting periods, so that's good. And then statewide metrics, the hospitals have been able to arrange testing for all their symptomatic clinical staff, so that's in the green. They are also able to adequately care for people without crisis. That's in the green. Where we're still a little red is that our infected healthcare workers are still, you know, we have, we have an increasing versus a stable or decreasing number of infected healthcare workers. So all of those things we're working on. If people want detailed information, it's on our website, Coronavirus Disease 2019. It's very detailed and goes into these summaries in depth. And again, everybody be safe, and thank you for complying with the executive order to wear masks. We appreciate it. We hope this makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Director McKinney. We'll move on to the minutes and communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to move that we receive minutes A through D and communications E through J.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion in a second? Is there any discussion? Alderman, whoops, Alderman Tomgrotty.
Thank you, Mayor. With the Joint Review Board, I was a little confused, and it's just a correction. Odessa made two motions at that meeting, and he's not even listed in the roll call, so I don't know if that's something that we should address or not.
He was there, so...
Yeah, just his name is missing from the roll call, so... And then I would like to address the 19th Amendment, which will be celebrated on August 26th, and there's the Forward Into Light Campaign, where they're asking for landmarks throughout the world to light up purple and gold, and I would like to see the columns lit for this event, if possible.
And we do plan on doing that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. About the Joint Review Board minutes, they appear to be a bit incomplete to me, so I hope we can get the corrected version in our next packet. Yeah, it looks like there's a page missing. There's no meeting adjourned or minutes submitted by or anything like that.
Okay. I will check on that.
Thank you. And then I also wanted to thank Police Chief for including a memorandum about the Police Week awards. I think it's a testament to, to you and your department for great service to our community. Thank you.
I was going to ask the chief to make a comment about the Officer of the Year. Officer Hydeman, seems like we just hired him about a year or two ago, so I don't know if you have any comments about any of the officers that received awards or the Officer of the Year chief? I don't know if anyone has a microphone over there?
Obviously, things were a little bit different this year without being able to do this during Police Week, but the thing that was nice about it is, you know, certainly getting the time to kind of review the year that we had. We thought last year was kind of a different and crazy year, so to speak, and this year is proving to be different for a variety of other reasons. To your point, Officer Hydeman is actually, I don't have his exact time, but it's at least been, he's over five now. I think he's probably close to about eight years, so time flies when you're, when you're having fun, and he truly is. Didn't go into great detail, obviously, in the memo, but Denton is certainly one of those that has really embodied what we expect from our officers, and he's really shown his passion while being in the schools. He's the SRO that's assigned to the high school, and he's just done a variety of very creative things with the students there and really building some relationships with those that have had negative interactions in the past with authority, may not be living in the greatest of environments at home. For example, when we were doing the Lights of Christmas program, where those were the gift cards that we were provided to us, that we tried to make an impact in the community, he actually took a group of them and was able to very subtly pass those along to some of the students that were struggling for Christmas, and to see the impact that, that his foresight had on those kids is just amazing. He's a very talented young officer, or younger officer, I guess more of one of our senior younger officers, but it's all, great guy to be around, and he's just been tickled by the, by the recognition that his peers in the department has given, so certainly appreciate that, but again, we could not do what we do if we didn't have the support of the community and the council, so we certainly appreciate everything that you give us to be able to do and serve the community in the way that we feel is best and most appropriate. So thank you.
Officer Grotty. Officer, sorry. Alderman Grotty.
All right. You're, you're all under arrest. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Director, Finance Director Jennifer Sazman. If you look at the nice, your summary of the second quarter earnings or revenue, first page, under the intergovernmental charges, seventh went down, public health. We had last year, I think, 150,000, and this year there's nothing in there. Is this a typo, or is this something COVID-related, or can you speak to that now, or will you have to get back to us?
Are you looking in the revenues?
Nope, the charges. Those are revenues. Those are revenues.
Because they're public charges to a different entity.
It's a public health.
Yeah. I think it's what you described under general fund revenues, the intergovernmental charges for 420,000 on page two, correct?
Yeah, they're not numbered, so...
What amount are we looking at? I apologize.
Oh, I'm looking at the public health, whether it's no dollars this year, but last year there was 150,000.
Okay, yeah, that I had alluded to on the second page of the memo. There was two line items that we normally would have had recorded those revenues by the end of June. That would have been the Health Department, the funds that we get from the school district, as well as the, the Police Department, the school officers. So we got those revenues in in July, where traditionally those would have been booked by the end of June.
Oh, sooner, okay, the timing thing.
Yeah, just by like a couple of weeks.
All right. The other question then, on the, you mentioned it in your memo also. Can you also maybe tell the audience about this 24/7 program? I mean, where we're tracking dollars of lost wages, and we've received some money, but...
Right, well, right now, we're using that account, it's a Health Department existing funds, to keep those funds separate at this point, so that the Health Department and us, so we can track them, but then at a certain point, when we get, receive the funds that we would from the state, we'll, we'll move stuff around, as well as the other funding sources that is available to the Health Department. So right now, for Health Department wages, we're keeping them all in that account to keep them separate at this point.
Okay, good.
And then, you know, especially within the Health Department, we'll move stuff around as appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My other question, I see Sam's not here, Community Developer, maybe the mayor can answer this. I'm talking about the Strong Neighborhood Program, where we have a budget of fund for 2020 of 300,000, and total funds allocated already are 200, a little over 200,000. And the last sentence of the memorandum states that there's 142,000 on the docket, but staff is still looking and making, it looks like a denial of some money of about 70,000. So are, we're not over the 300 because of the 69 would be coming out of that 142? Okay.
Yes, and they can only allocate up to $300,000 total.
Okay, it does ceiling out at that. Good. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't going over. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Sure. Alderman Repela?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Jennifer, this is for you, too. The general, let's see, under licenses and permits, just so I'm understanding this correctly, when I go down three, six, nine, 12, 13th, one, cat licenses, just so I'm understanding this correctly. 2019, we budgeted $600. We got back $242, and then, which would be 40%. In 2020, we budgeted $700, and we got back $26. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly or not?
That is correct.
So do we have fewer cats?
It could be a couple of things, but also with, with dog and cat licenses, we receipt those as, say, like, it's like 100, 150 at a time, so although the number for cat licenses is low, we kind of do them in a bulk receipt, so all of a sudden you'll see a jump, but cat licenses have gone down the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go down about 10 or 12 more to the sign permits. We budgeted $3,000 in 2019. We took in $975. This year, we budgeted 4,500, and we only took in $375. So what is a sign permit? What is that?
And again, this is only, this is as of June, so for 2019, you know, that was the number, the 975 was at the end of June. We primarily see most of that revenue come in at the end of the year, when they do the sign inspections?
Right, but as, if you look, 2019, we took 32% in, and now this time, in this upcoming year, we only took in 8%. So why not? Why is the big difference?
I can reach out to Community Development on that. I don't have a specific answer.
Okay, so now let's go down two more, three more, to the pool permit. $1,900, and we took in 1,865, which is like 98%. Good job. This year was 2175, and we only took in $610. What was the reason there?
Well, we did anticipate the pool revenues being down, at least as far as permits, with not knowing, you know, what's all, at that time going on with the pool.
These are backyard pools.
What's that?
These are backyard pools.
Oh, I apologize.
I did not know that, Don. Thank you.
That's what that one is.
I didn't know you had to get a backyard pool permit.
I told you that.
Yeah, we're going to get you.
That's why, when I was, of course, we're making a fortune in your neighborhood.
They are. I, I don't know a neighbor who's got a backyard pool permit. Well, Officer Stoyka, there's a job for you guys. You can easily see them.
He went from chief to officer.
Well, chief, too. Yeah, well, same thing. Okay, now, let's move on. State aid senior center, down for the federal state county aids. State aid senior center was 25,741, and then we took in 9,300 for 36%. This year, we budgeted 25,741, the same amount, and we only took in 7,200. Was that because of senior, that was state aid for the senior center, so explain that, please.
That's completely a timing issue of when we submit the reports to the county. They pay us monthly, so if we're delayed on sending them to them, it's just, our payment is delayed. We will receive the actual amount budgeted by the end of the year.
Okay, now let's flip over to the next backside, public charges. When we go down to three, six, nine, 12, 15, 18, 21, 2021, pool, 56,000. We took in 22,000 for 40%. We budgeted the same, 56,000. We only took in 9,400, and that was the money that we took in for pool passes, or what was that, Jennifer?
That's a combination of pool passes and the, the daily registration. It's all one account.
Okay, so then we go right down, right below that to recreation, 48,000, and we took in 24,000 for 51%. We upped the budget to, or upped the expectation to 50,000, and we only took in $7,000 for 14%. So we didn't have as many programs going, or what was that reason?
I'd say a lot of that is attributed to the pandemic, with a lot of programs having to be canceled or modified.
Okay, then let's go down two more to the senior center. $1,600, and we took in $1,282 for 80%, which is great. We upped the budget to 2,200, but yet the money went down to 614. Again, a COVID issue?
Correct.
Okay, now let's go down to the public health. I think Ted pointed that one out. You covered that one, didn't you, Ted? Down to intergovernmental charges. All right, bingo, we got it. Chief, you're on the, you're on there for the pool, so, all right, I'll tell my neighbors to not answer their door. Thank you.
I just want to follow up with that. Obviously, all of these revenues, there's going to be a lot of shortfalls because of COVID-19, and also...
Not people out in the neighborhood that have quite a lot to know about it.
And also, you have to realize that City Hall was not open for a period of time, so people were not getting their dog license, cat licenses, pool, and more importantly, to me, fire pit. And so I think there's probably 100 more fire pits this year in this community than there was ever, because people are spending more time at home outside. So I guess right now, what I'm doing and saying is that City Hall is open. There is no more excuse for not getting your dog license, your cat license, your, your pool permit, and your fire pit permit. People should be coming to City Hall and getting those, or they should have gotten them when they paid their last payment in taxes, so I think that's very important. And, you know, if we're going to have these fees and not enforce them, then eliminate all of them, and I feel very strongly about that. Why have them if we're not going to enforce it? So it seems like any times, you know, especially with the fire permit thing, you know, they get a, can't do that, and, you know, you should go get a permit. Well, the permit is for a reason, because you're given the rules, and then it's also gives you an idea of where that can be and can't be and those kind of things, and that, all the reason we have these, there's reasons for that. It's not just to generate some kind of fund. So, yeah, I expected the dog and cat one to go down. That's mostly, we pay the county back or something like that. We get two bucks or a dollar or something from it, but I just want to remind people they should get those.
Mayor? I've got a question. How much is the, the pool permit? Anybody have a thought on that?
Something that goes through the inspection department. It's not a huge amount, though, I'm sure.
Pardon me?
It's not a huge amount. I don't know what it is.
I thought about 150.
Now, these are for the inflatable type pools.
Oh.
Did you have a...
I thought around 150.
$150?
For the big.
For the big 16-foot diameter Menards pools? Oh, boy. Okay, all right. I know my neighbors had no clue about a pool permit. All right.
That's why they're going for you.
Thank you.
And the other reason, too, I've been doing a lot of walking, and I noticed people have these pools, and they're abandoned, so then they sit there, and then they fill with rainwater, and it becomes a problem. So that's the other reason that, you know, good people, like probably in your neighborhood, probably shouldn't be charged because they're, they're going to take care of theirs, but there are places throughout the city where they're not doing that.
Okay, moving, oh, all those in favor?
I am.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to public comments, we have a couple people on the public this evening. If anyone wishes to speak this evening, you could step up to the microphone.
I aired, last time I was up here, I asked the people, the attorney and the council to contact the state attorney general. That is a false. What I'm talking about, in order to get satisfaction, you might have to go to the district attorney in Winnebago County. I feel that we're in violation, the council or the city, in regards to the... the projects as far as, uh, two thousand dollar grant for paint and restore in the other two, including the fifteen thousand dollar one. State statute, general duties of public officials, nineteen forty-five, section two, four and five. You're in direct violation. I've talked to the mayor. I asked him to get on the council agenda to have a vote to see if we could talk about this. And it has not happened. I have cabbaged with the city attorney a couple of times on it. And I've talked to three or four aldermen and a few other people involved that know about these types of things. I'm asking now to put everything on hold until you can get an answer from district about, uh, county goggins in regards to, uh, if you're right or wrong, but if you want, I'll read the statute two, four and five. In your direct violation, no elected official can accept a position of financial gain of anything of substantial value for the private benefit of himself or herself or his or her immediate family. That means if you're an elected official, you're not invited, you're not eligible for certain things. Um, I don't know how you guys will handle this. You might have to go in the back room. You might have to talk about it at the next meeting. But I would hope you could address this. I don't think the housing authority should make any more, uh, decisions on this until you have a clarification. A little transparency is, Alderman Taylor would always ask for. That's what I'm asking for, now transparency, to find out exactly what's right. I appreciate it. If you have any questions, you have my telephone number. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Go ahead.
May I take this off? Or you prefer it on, it doesn't matter? Okay. If I take it off, you can see that I'm small and so it's better.
We can also understand you better, so.
Oh, good, great. Um, I know I'm allotted five minutes. If I, if I may, I'd like to take one minute prior to my five and just make a few general comments. It's good to see all of you again. I've stood up here before council briefly. Usually it's my partner, Grant Fisk, that stands up here. I was, I came out here again this time with my wife. We landed just before July fourth weekend. She stayed four weeks. Now she's back in New York City in quarantine for two weeks before she can go back out and pursue her acting career. I am here and I am not leaving. I am not leaving because I have a job to do. And I am not leaving because if I go home, I have to quarantine in a hotel before I go see my wife. We live in a large loft apartment with no walls, no place to get away from each other unless you go into a closet or go into the bathroom. So I'm not going home to see my wife until I finish my job. I would have to quarantine for two weeks there to see her for a week before I came back here. I would lose a month. I can't afford to lose months on my projects. So I'm here till I leave. I've met some of you in here. I've met some of you on the street. I've met some of you at Bazaar After Dark. I consider myself to be a local. I rented an apartment on Main Street. I've started four LLCs, two operating companies to do business, two holding companies. My wife and I believe we're going to spend a lot of time here going forward because she's an actor and there's no work in New York City. We love it out here. If she can't work in New York City, why stay in a small loft apartment in New York City when we can come out here and enjoy the outdoors? So we will be spending more time out here if her career doesn't pick up pretty soon. I have two projects out here in Manassia currently and I would like to address both of them. One is the Bren. I believe it's on the agenda tonight for an assignment or consideration for assignment. And the other is one forty main. I take full responsibility of the status of both of those projects. The buck stops with me. I make no excuses. I don't pass the buck. I don't throw anybody under the bus. So if you have any issues, please address me, either directly here or anywhere else. Club Tavern, the church, whatever. I first want to thank the city for entering into a development agreement with RFDG, with me and my partner, Grant Fisk, for the Bren project. It was one that we conceptualized, we planned, we designed, we engineered, along with the city engineers, for the underground stormwater project. It is on schedule, on budget per se, except for the increase in raw materials. Wood products are up ten percent since I was here last. But it is on schedule. But there are some uncertainties now going forward due to the coronavirus. And those uncertainties generally have to do with travel and quarantine and restrictions. Everyone in here knows I was born in Georgia and I live in New York City. My partners are in Georgia, Florida, California and Arizona. Four of the five hottest states for the outbreak of coronavirus in the state. I can't ask my team members, my partners, my associates, my consultants, my advisors, my bankers, my investors and my lenders to get on a plane and come to Manassia and bring coronavirus to Manassia. They would have to come here and quarantine for two weeks in a hotel before they could come out and help me or do any, have any meetings with council. They might have to quarantine when they went back home. Coronavirus is an issue. I've spoken with Sam Schroder about this and I've spoken to Grant Fisk about this and we have a solution. And we hope that the city will embrace it. And that is to allow us to assign the Bren project to someone that is qualified and local and vetted. Someone that can do and will do what I and Grant were going to do if it weren't not for the coronavirus. There has to be a local team. It is a complicated project. It is no less than three parcels that have to be combined into one. It is two buildings that have to be acquired and demolished. It's all the infrastructure, all the road movement, the underwater storm, uh, treatment facility. It is a very complicated project. I cannot do it without having my entire team here. So I've asked the city, I've asked Sam Schroder and I've asked the mayor now and council to allow us to assign this to someone else so that it can stay on schedule and can be completed so I can fulfill my promise to the city. And that is have the Bren across the street with the organ back in it and, and, um, a valuable asset to the city. So if anyone has any questions, that's it in a general nutshell. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'm certain that the city will look at the, uh, development team that's going to be basically our assignee. I will fully support them. I will stand beside them. I will go on site visits. I'll help them with financing. I'll help them in any way that I can to make certain that the project's completed. I don't have a guaranteed role going forward. If it's just to be a cheerleader for the project, I will do so. If they want one hundred percent control and I'm a cheerleader, that's my role to be a cheerleader for the project. But I wanted to stand before council and say to you that I will honor my obligation. Fair enough? Okay. I don't know what I can add to the Bren project, um, before I move on. Um, everyone has a general idea of what it is. It's forty-plus apartments over eight thousand five hundred square foot of commercial retail. The difficulty, from my last visit to this visit, was when I was back in New York City, talking to my advisors, consultants, l, investors and lenders. They were like, whoa, whoa, slow down. We have portfolios full of non-performing, underperforming, commercial storefront retail. We're still with you, Stephen, but just slow it down a little bit. Because not only are we trying to manage our portfolio and cash calls, a cash call being, these monies are coming from managed funds. This is high net worth individuals around the country that participate by investing in these funds and then these funds distribute monies to projects around the country. Not only are they having to manage portfolios, but they're getting capital calls from investors asking for their money back, which is another hurdle. And then some of their portfolio, they're having to redevelop those assets. They're having to solve for automatic doors, creating wider corridors, adding additional elevator, uh, updating air handling systems to meet the requirements of the coronavirus. They're very, very, very busy with what they have on their table and they said, just slow it down, Stephen. And I'm like, I can't go to the city and ask to slow it down. It's full steam ahead. They've got their project underneath mine. We have to go forward and this is the solution. And I won't say anymore about the Bren unless there's questions. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. One forty main. I don't have many notes. It's just to remind me of what to talk about. One forty main. Um, again, no excuses, no passing the buck, no throwing anybody under the bus. I'm responsible. We acquired this building back in August of last year, twenty nineteen. And everyone knows why we bought it. I've done it before, bought municipal assets before, found a way to give them back to the community. Not directly, but indirectly. So that there's floors or spaces or events in there that are, contribute back to the community. Prior to us closing in August, we engaged a local general contractor to walk the building with us and give us, give us their opinion of the status of the building, their budget for demolition, their budget for rehabilitation, their budget for build out. This particular general, general contractor had recently brought someone new on board. And what the information that they had provided to us wasn't necessarily accurate. That individual is now gone from that general contractor because of us. When the issues arose in what he had told us versus what was reality, his position at that general contractor firm came to an end, unfortunately. So after we acquired it in August, after two months, when we realized there was a problem with the current existing general contractor, we disengaged that contractor and engaged with a new contractor, C.R. Structures, as our new contractor. That cost us two months on the front end. General, C.R. Structures had to do what the prior G.C. had done prior to our acquisition. Walk the building, come up with estimates, budgets, plans, options, et cetera. That took at least two or three months. Then we started demolition and we could actually start talking to tenants about, here's what we planned for the building. And I'm, I'm talking over five minutes. Can I, okay. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. We started talking to, we started working with a new G.C. We started talking with tenants. We started the demolition process. When we started the demolition process, we found out there were some construction violations. And again, we know the building's been remodeled four times since it belonged to the bank. We don't know who did the work, who approved it, who authorized it, who signed off on it. We don't care. When these issues came to light, and I'll be happy to share with you what they were, we fixed them. I told my general contractor, fix it, don't repair it. Fix it, don't cover it up. Do it right, do it once. Because someday, somehow, some way, I'm going to be handing this building off to another owner and I want him to be able to look back and said, Stephen did the building, did the building right. The two issues that we found with the building were quite substantial. It could have led to injury or death. One was that the, the floor was electrified. As they took up, as they took up the carpet and started scraping the adhesives, sparks started lighting up. There were raw wires right there at the surface of the concrete that hadn't been addressed when walls were taken down or walls removed. That was an electrified floor. In addition, there were some cinder blocks, walls that we were going to maintain to create separate offices that were on top of wood substructures. And that's not supposed to be built that way. It's fine, city. I'm not holding you accountable. I took care of it. I told my general contractor, dig up the floor, pour a new floor. Tear out the walls, put up new walls. It's taken care of. It's fixed. It's up to code. Everything's copacetic. I like that word. So having to address those concerns cost us another two or three months. I talked to C.R. Structures about staining the exterior in the fall. He, he gave me some options. The options were anywhere from forty to seventy thousand dollars to stain the exterior. I wanted to pull off the narrow mullions to sort of clean up the facade. Once the engineer went and looked at those mullions, he said, Stephen, you pull those off. I'm afraid the whole facade's going to come down because you've got to lift them, break them and it's all stuckoed and painted and all of these things. He said, don't touch this facade. If you start removing any one thing, you might as well take the whole thing down. And then we talked about a budget just to stain the building of, in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. Because then you've also got to replace the facade if you take it down. He also told me, don't do this in the winter because the stain won't adhere to the building. You have to wait until the temperature is right. During this conversation, thank you for nodding with me. It's good to have a supporter in the room. While he was telling me, we can't do this in the fall and winter. Okay, we delay it till spring or summer. We were talking to tenants, second and third floor tenants. We had a tenant in the fall of last year. They actually joined us at the Bazaar After Dark. They pulled out for some unknown reason. It could have been financial. But then I found a second tenant, which also agreed to move in, but has since canceled their agreement because of coronavirus. They've got co-working spaces in the region where nobody's coming. They've got event spaces where nobody's signing up. So they don't want to sign up to a new lease when they've got underperforming businesses locally. But as part of those conversations with new tenants, I talked about, here's what I'm going to do for the building. This is what I've promised the city and this is what I'm going to do to the building. And as we were talking about the facade, they said, they asked, do you think maybe we could be part of the conversation to choose the colors? I'm like, sure. So when I came back in July of this year, I talked to C.R. Structures and I'm like, we're still going to stain the building, but let's wait until we know who the tenant's going to be. Let's let them have some input. If their corporate color is red, maybe the mullions are red. If the, if the color is green, maybe the bricks are green. If it's purple, I don't want a purple building, but maybe I'll make the brow purple, right? Something purple. So I told the G.C., it's on the schedule, it's in the budget, it will be done. Let's wait until we determine who the tenant's going to be and then we'll make a, a color decision. So this is all part of the process. It's all part of the reason why it's not what you expect it to look like today. I've had it fully leased up twice, only to find the second and third tenants, floor tenants pull out twice. I'm currently talking to other prospective tenants for the second and third floor. If they do not agree, if I cannot find a tenant in due time, I'm going to form two more LLCs. I'm going to form a co-working LLC and I'm going to manage the second floor myself. I'll fill it up. I'm going to form an event space management company LLC and I'll hire a manager and I'll own and operate the third floor with a manager. So I can assure you that the building will be full for a third time, even if I have to fill it up myself. Again, it was a promise I made to the city and it was a, it is a promise I will fulfill. It, I wanted to just have this opportunity tonight to tell you why we had two months delay, then three months delay, then another two months delay and why it wasn't completely redeveloped per our agreement last December. The tenant pulled out. I was told I couldn't do the facade in the winter. And why we still haven't completed it. I will make these decisions in short order, short order. I'm still talking to Manassia Market about the timing of coming into the first floor and the terms within a lease agreement. She would be on section A, which is the southern section. I'd like to have something like a country store, general store in the back in section B. We're talking about that again tomorrow. I'm meeting with C.R. Structures again before the weekend. I'll have a new schedule. I'll have new budgets. I'll have new options. I'll keep spending money. Um, I've spent probably, in addition to acquiring it, I've spent probably two hundred thousand a date. Bear with me a moment. Yeah, two hundred thousand a date. Uh, I've also bought inventory that's in storage, building materials, F.S.N.E. Grant knows the numbers more than I do. He manages to checkbook for the company. And there's been things we've bought and returned or did and got credit back for, so I'm not a hundred percent on the numbers. I bought the building. We spent about two hundred thousand. You know, the plan was to put a restaurant in the basement, rotating chef. There's no reason to put a restaurant in a basement right now with COVID. So I'm finding a next best use. Uh, still plan on building the roof patio next year. Everything I promised or everything I talked to people about, I'm still planning to do. Because, as I told the mayor, I live in the West Village of Manhattan. I want to create an extension of the West Village in Manassia so that this can be our second home. I looked at a home today on Dodie Island. I think it's five twenty-four River Way. Just came on the market today. Me and my wife, when she was here, we traveled extensively looking at every neighborhood and a lot of houses. We narrowed it down to just River Way. We are going to live on River Way. Five twenty-four came on the market today. It's on the canal, not the channel. We prefer the channel. Still a nice house. So we're considering it. So I will be a local. I am not going to do anything here in this city so that I have to be fearful of any one of you in this room going forward. And I'm adding a little humor to the conversation before we. And I'm adding a little humor to the conversation before we wrap it up. That's my story. I will have a formal, something formal for you regarding 140. Sam Schroeder's not here tonight, I promised him that. It will be after I meet with my general contractor later this week. I texted with him today. Like I said, if I can't, if I can't fill it up with tenants, I'll fill it up myself, and I'll just stay out here more months of the year. Back to the Brin, just real, anything on 140, then I got one more thing I want to say on the Brin before I close out?
So typically, we don't do question and answer.
Oh, okay.
So if you just want to make your statement, and then we can contact you again.
Okay, sure.
In the future, but if you have one more point on the Brin, feel free, and then we should probably get moving forward.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Mayor. I'll owe everybody a coffee in Danish for the next meeting, and we'll call it even. The Brin, we've spent, we have spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to date on pre-development, a hundred and three thousand direct with the general contractor, the other indirect. You know, we're hoping we get reimbursed for that as part of the assignment. We were committed to spend up to four hundred to five hundred thousand in pre-development to get it to shovel-ready. It's a very, very complicated and expensive project to get it to shovel-ready status to trigger, trigger financing. So when the, when, when you're, when you're asking what Steve's commitment to his projects, you know, it's a half million at 140 and half million at the Brin. And I've got other projects here in Manassia as well, and some are two fifty to five hundred, so my, 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 my heart commitment is here, and so is my financial commitment. And, you know, one day I'll be sitting in one of your chairs, so. Not yours, Mayor. Never.
Are you sure?
But again, I took more than my five minutes, a lot of time. I'm going to leave the room in case you want to talk about me, not behind my back, but just in general. But thank you very much for your time, all right?
We do appreciate the update this evening. We appreciate the update this evening.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more than welcome to come back and stand up and give you an update at any time. I want there to be conversation and cooperation. That's what I want. So invite me in, call me in, ask Schroeder to email me and ask me questions. If there's special meetings I need to attend, let me know. Anything I can do for the community, I'm here as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Is this where I just make a general? I'm not a quiet person.
So we just need your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Lisa Rexes, 340 Lisbon Avenue. My question is about our roads in Manassia. They're awful. I can't ride my motorcycle on them because they're too bumpy. It's like taking your life in your hands because you have to dodge. And I'm just questioning, we have a lot of things going on right now, and what if, when it starts getting nasty soon, if the roads don't stay in good shape? Do we make our contractors repair them and keep them in good shape for a certain amount of years? Because it doesn't seem like it's happening. And our, I live off of Taco, and Taco, the manhole covers, they're horrible. I mean, if you hit one of those, you get the bumps going, and it's just not very pleasant. So that's my big thing, because we have so much construction going on right now, and I just want to make sure that it's a good quality.
Sure. And I guess if you have certain areas or certain concerns, Adam Alex would be the person, or Cory Gordon, you could call either one of them, and they'd be more than happy to look into some of those concerns and tell you a little bit about the warranties and things that we get on those roads as well.
Okay.
So if you just want to call Public Works and ask for either the director or deputy director, I always forget what Cory, Deputy Director of Engineering. Let's forget what his title is.
I'll just, I'll email, it's easier.
Yeah, they would be able to help you a little bit more.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight. Okay, seeing no one else in the gallery, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are four items on the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to have any of the items separated this evening? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. Was there a reason why we don't have minutes?
Because I wasn't here to review the agenda? I don't know. Is it the election?
Yes, I was preparing for the August election.
All right, with that, then I'd like to hold the Board of Public Works' recommendations, all three.
Okay, so we'll just do them all separate, then?
All right, let's just do it all. Okay, Mayor, oh, never mind.
Go ahead, just. Oh, okay. Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, approve the payment to Northeast Asset Fault Inc., contract unit number 2020-01. That's for the street reconstruction and rehabilitation for one hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, seventy cents, and that is payment number one.
So motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item two? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Make motion to approve the change order for U.S. petroleum equipment. That's for the Public Works Construction Project for two fuel product dispensers. It's an addition of eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. Change order number ten.
So motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Motion for item three?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the, to approve the change order for Myron Construction Company, Inc., for the Public Works Construction Project. That's for the ceiling paint. It's an addition of thirty-four thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. Change order number eleven.
So motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Adam. This past week, I got the opportunity to look at a bunch of streets. We went around, looked at the streets, and we, we do have a schedule that's coming up for the council as far as updates, but what I want to add is, I'd like for us to, so that not everybody is bothering Adam to go through the facility that may be in about a month or so, when things are a little further on. I thought it would be much further on than it was. The caulking's in really good shape, though. Do you know what I'm talking about? I accidentally go, that caulking looks nice, and I touched it, and it was, they just did it like fifteen minutes ago. No, you can't. So that's the change order, ten cents. So but anyways, I think that would be a good idea, a little update for everybody. Maybe we have a special meeting where we go out there and just kind of see how things are coming along. So thank you, Mayor.
Chief Steika took some photos from the air of the project last week, I believe, and I did include one of them this morning on the city's website, if you look for the Public Works Facility Construction Project. So if you want to take a look at that as well, it is out there on our city website. Seeing no further questions, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item four is the certified survey map. Is there a motion? Alderman Schmidt?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to approve the certified survey map as presented for 917 and 920 Clover Court, parcels number seven dash zero one, seven zero zero dash six nine, and seven dash one, seven zero zero dash six eight, dissolving Outlet, Outlet one R of the Lake Park Villas replat. Gee, you don't even let me finish.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Action items, number one is the accounts payable and payroll for July 31st through August 6th. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of July 31st through April 6th, 2020, in the amount of one million, seven hundred, seven thousand, six hundred, eighty-two dollars and eighteen cents.
So motion and a second by Alderman Tom, Ted Grady. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
I just want to point out, it's actually through August 13th. We didn't run accounts payable last week, but it should encompass last week's payroll. So the date is just wrong on here. So should it be 731 through August 13th?
Okay. So we'll make that correction in the minutes, that the motion is through the 13th? Is that, okay. And seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2019 through 2021 licensing period, as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated August 17th, 2020.
Is there a second? So motion and a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item three is the property acquisition for 13 Main Street. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the property acquisition of 13 Main Street, Manassia, parcel three dash zero zero, eight three six dash zero zero, as recommended by the Planning Commission through budget tax incremental District Number Ten Funds to assist the redevelopment of the Taco Street corridor.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion and a second by Alderman Langdon. Is there any discussion?
In the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Sure. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item four is the First Amendment to the Land Purchase and Development Agreement for the Brin Project. Do we have a motion? It's, it's up to whoever would like to, if you'd like to, Ann.
I'll do it.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the First Amendment to the Land Purchase and Development Agreement on the Brin Project, as presented.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Alderman Sevanek?
Seeing that there's something significant, is this, is there a reason why Sam or Little Joe isn't here?
I'm not sure why Director Schrader isn't here. I mean, Director, not Director, we'll get this eventually.
Sure.
Why, why Joe is not here this evening?
Sam's on vacation.
Sam is ill, so he.
Oh, he is?
Yeah. So otherwise, he would have been here this evening. I don't know if you want anyone to go through what the changes are.
I think we should discuss it a little bit.
The attorney could definitely go through.
The presentation that we had earlier, so that we get a better, I did call Sam today and did not get a reply back.
That would be why you didn't get a reply back.
Right, so now I understand. So the city attorney could, I appreciate it.
Sure. This First Amendment to the Land Purchase and Development Agreement, first of all, what it does is accept the rights, duties, and obligations of the original group, which was RF Development Group, LLC. They were the signatories under the original development agreement, and they, under the development agreement, there is a provision that allows for an assignment, but the assignment has to be accepted by the common council. And so they are asking for the assignment to occur, and the new company is Y.B.R. Properties, another LLC. In addition to that, you will recall that there was or has been discussion with respect to, and I'm trying to think of the address of the, the property that we just did.
13 Main?
Thank you. 13 Main Street. And under the development agreement, what it provides is that the LLC was to acquire that property, and we've had discussions over the course of several meetings with respect to that property, and understood that the developer would be contributing a portion of the cost of acquisition. And so under number four, that is identifying that the purchase price, which is one dollar, changes to sixty thousand. That's the number that has been discussed previously. In addition to that, because it initially indicated that the developer was going to acquire that property, there's some language in here that just indicates that the city is the one that's going to be acquiring that property.
With a reimbursement of sixty thousand.
Correct.
Yep.
And then because the dates are, are in need of changing because of the fact that the city has not moved forward with respect to the CDI grant, did not have the information necessary in order to move forward with that on the financing of the project, and so that date needed to be changed. And so that's reflected in here as well with the new LLC or new developer. And the dates are being changed. It seems pretty, you know, you're going from September 1st to September 20, October 1st to October 20. And then, of course, the delivery notices, because there is a new LLC, that is changed as well. You may notice that the attorney, however, is the same one. So it's the same attorney working with both of these LLCs. So in a nutshell, I guess those are what the changes are.
Mayor, the reason I tried to get ahold of Sam is that I knew about this for some time now, and just kind of kept it on the radar in case it didn't happen. But I don't understand why we're not asking who the local new LLC is, basically, who they are and what they represent. And I mean, we had a million questions before from Alderman Nichols about the last group, and I'm wondering why we don't have more information right now on this particular group. That's why I was hoping to hear from Sam.
The only thing that I have are with respect, obviously, in the First Amendment, there are members that are identified on there with respect to who would be financing, that I do not know. You know, who the financing mechanism is or what the financing mechanism is, other than it, apparently, they are local.
That's all we know. I mean, I, I'm willing to move forward, but I think this council needs to be a little more informed. So a motion's been made and seconded. I don't know if someone else has questions, but I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward, but I think we, I don't want to waste a lot of time tonight, but I think we need to be informed on some additional information.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question, I don't know who can answer it. The public parking, page three. For some reason, I remember it was like from two to six. It says unrestricted parking or restricted parking between the hours of two to six. And now we have 12 to 6. Does that conflict?
This has not changed.
It has not?
The only thing that changed is the first page, number one. So when you go to the second page, number 1, 2, 3, that's the original that was signed in the past.
Okay.
And you can see the signatures at the end.
Okay.
Because I ran into Debbie's signature when I was looking at it this morning.
Right, right.
Going, why is Debbie on there?
She came back. So it was always 12 to 6?
That was what the original was, yes.
Oh, okay. I'm fine with that, just that I was just looking out that Jitters could have patrons and they would have to move their cars at midnight rather than park there. I'm just.
This, that doesn't mean that it's, that it's, things have to be cleared at that. That's the minimum that they would have to provide. So if the city or the developer wanted to provide longer term, they could. But that's the minimum.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure how that was chosen, though, originally.
Okay, I'm just thinking, I know I haven't been in Jitters in years, but I know the bars stay open until 2 o'clock.
You haven't been in Jitters for years?
For years, I haven't been there.
Well, why haven't you? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Alderman Sevenek that it's important for the council to be informed at this point. And I think this provides a great opportunity for us to hit the pause button and learn that information before going forward. And I'll tell you why. I'm glad Mr. Rourke was here this evening to tell us what, tell us his version of that story. And if you listen closely, there were some very revealing parts to what he said. I'm very concerned, starting with the agreement that we had, okay? 140 Main was to be completed by December 31 of 2019. It's not, and it's vacant. 13 Main was to be acquired by the developer. It wasn't. We did. 7 Main, 7 Takeo has not been acquired yet. Attorney Captain just said information wasn't provided that would have allowed the city to move forward applying with the CDI grant. And now we have an amendment that assigns the entire project over to someone else, another group. There is no reference to the names that were on the original agreement. An entirely new group. And we need to know and understand more about this group. What they've done in the past, what their qualifications are, and the financial backing for this project. And here's why. Because as Mr. Rourke said, COVID has put a lot of uncertainties into not only his world, but the future of this project. He mentioned costs increasing. That includes construction costs. And the entire timeline has been affected. And so our goal and our role is to protect and enhance property values in our downtown. And my concern is that by just moving ahead with this tonight, not knowing more about this team, we want to be sure that at the end of the day, we have a project. If we sign that property over to a new developer without knowing anything about them, what happens if the project suddenly experiences some delays or simply falls apart? And we have a property in our downtown, a major corner, that's owned by someone else, and we've lost all rights or control to that property. Attorney Captain, when is the property supposed to be turned over as part of this agreement?
I was just going to say, there, under no circumstances would the property be turned over, just like tomorrow. There has to be a demonstration of financial capacity in order to move forward with the project. That is typically done through the finance director. It does not come to the council. You know, that information is confidential, but then if there are issues or questions, obviously, that's brought to the attention of the common council. But there has to be shown that demonstration. And then that is what is utilized in order to move forward with the CDI grant. So you can't apply for the CDI grant unless you have that.
So if you look under.
I guess I'm just thinking, why would somebody take on this obligation and all of the rights and obligations of the developer if they didn't believe that they were going to move forward with it? We would just be stuck with somebody that walked away from the project or tried to get out of the agreement.
So if you look at city obligations on page six, there is a portion regarding transfer of properties. And it does talk about doing that not before, where did I say? Prior to the transfer, they shall demonstrate financial commitment to sufficiently fund through equity and debt financing sources to continuously operate, maintain, and fulfill the projects. These transfers then will happen in the event a receiving party objects.
Yeah, there would be a demonstration from the lenders indicating that there's the, that there's a financial commitment to complete the project. And then that helps to trigger the transfer of properties necessary to move with the next step.
And thank you for pointing that out because I was looking for that many times as the, in my rewriting of the agreement today, and I could not find it. However, it says that that is part of Phase Three, and that shall be completed no later than September 1st.
And if you look in the amendment, that date has been changed through to September 20th.
That was not entirely clear for, to me in this amendment. So the transfer amount has been changed.
You're correct. I don't believe I see a change in date for that. That's the CDI grant, though.
Okay, so please point out.
Oh, yeah, under.
Number six.
Number six.
Number six.
They extend all of Phase Three from September 20, September 1 through September, to September 20th. So that, it does state the.
And I think they reference 3.5 because that's the extension of deadlines provision.
Okay. Yeah, there's three different parts to this agreement. So that was not entirely clear to me upon review. Well, as Alderman Sevenek said, we went through great lengths to know as much as we could about the developers when we entered into the first agreement. And I think that we have a responsibility to the community to know more about YRB LL, or YBR LLC, or YBR Properties LLC before moving ahead with this amendment. Mr. Rourke was here tonight clearly explaining that he was not part of the project any longer and that someone else was taking over. And I think we owe it to our community to make sure we know and they know who's taking over. So I'll listen to what others have to say for now. Thank you.
Alderman Grotty?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to go on to page three. Coming from the landmarks perspective with the demolition, there are certain items that shall be hopefully salvaged from 7 Takeo along with the gears that are in the fountain. And it's basically says, refers to removing all building materials. And there's nothing about any saving of items. After what happened on the Bonta site, I want to make sure that everything is either photographed and put into the documents so demolition teams know what pieces look like and what things are, so we don't have to go through this again.
I don't see anything in here in particular that talks about.
We had requested things.
That's not in the original land purchase and development agreement.
It should have been, we requested it.
So the landmarks would grant approval of the certificate of appropriateness for the demolition? And I believe it would go within that document?
That's, well, that's kind of what I was wondering, if it goes to the next phase when the building is, whoever demos it, it goes in their contract.
Someone will have to approve that demolition because it's within the landmarks district. So when you approve that demolition, then you would be able to say, we approve the demolition with the following conditions. And if they don't agree with those conditions, then they could appeal that to the common council.
Okay, all right.
But we should do exactly what you said and make sure it's detailed. Descriptions and photographs, if there are things that need to be salvaged. We did look at those gears, and they're going to be fun to salvage because they're apparently
In concrete.
Into the concrete foundations of those areas, but we'll see what we can do. But yeah, I think that should, I'm not 100% sure, but does that sound reasonable? That's where it would go?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, you wouldn't add it here because this is already.
I just want to keep it.
Okay.
Front line.
We will talk to Joe about that and make sure it kind of stays on.
Yeah, I will. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I tend to agree with Alderman Nichols on this issue. It is a big change, and we certainly should know some backgrounds on a project this big and what, who the developers are. Also on page three, who Alderman Repella mentioned about the hours from 12 to 6. That night when this document was approved, I made the same discovery. And both Grant and Stephen that evening said, they had just put that time in there, and they would be agreement with our ordinance, which is 2 o'clock to 6 o'clock that evening. So that's already been changed, and it should have probably shown up in this document here. And they, either of them had any problem with that. And we want to mirror our ordinance with that same parking lot. Thank you.
Alderman Sevenek?
I believe that even in our purchase agreement of 13 Takeo, that was part of it, that it should be from 2 to 6. But anyways, you know, this is too important of a project for the city. These are, what I've been told, highly respected developers. I say let's not delay matters. We can get more information as we go along. We always have a clause that if we have to pull out, we pull out, okay? There's not a lot of dollar commitment from this body anyways, other than $1 or that property over there. So I would ask that we move forward and that the staff and the administration provide as much possible information to us at our next meeting. So I encourage you to vote for it.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'm not encouraging a vote for or against this at this point. I just think we should all be entitled to the same information before, so that we can make an informed vote. So I move that we postpone this vote until the next meeting, which would be the day after, the day after Labor Day, September 8th. Thank you. And have an opportunity to learn more about the developers.
Is there a second? So motion and a second. Discussion on the motion to postpone? Okay, you can talk about that afterwards if this fails then. I do want to comment that these dates are September 20th. And if we're not going to make a decision until September 2nd or 3rd, that's going to push all of this project back and push it into winter construction and other things. And I would be concerned with loss of the project by basically holding on to it. So any other discussion on the motion to postpone? Can you do a roll call on that? Oh, it's already up there. I'm sorry. My glasses are fogged up. This is the motion to postpone. Oh, it's September 8th, even, look at that. So good. So.
Motion fails 6-2.
Randy, you had something else that you wanted to discuss as well?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mayor. Concerned if this kind of falls through at some point, are they under?
It's not going to fall through.
It's not going to fall through.
Be positive.
So they're, okay. It's not that we would, they're going to own the land and they could maybe not build what they say they're going to build. It must be built. What they have, these pictures and everything, that has to be built.
Yes.
Once we turn that over. They couldn't turn it into something else at all.
No, they have a development agreement to build that, and I think the pictures are right in the.
Right, yeah, yeah, the pictures are beautiful, yeah.
And, and that clause that I was talking about on page six.
Yes.
That would ensure that they have the financing available to do that before, that we would transfer that land to them.
And we would be able to see that financing or whatever.
Yes, and that would be something that the finance director would review. And if need be, we would pull Ellers or someone else like that into, also review that to make sure that we believe that there's sufficient capital there to construct the project.
The only thing I liked about Becky's idea is I'd still like to know more about who these secret investors are. We may, I mean.
Pretty much LLC, every LLC that is designed today, you will not find out who the investors are. If you look at the LLC that did One Menasha Center, there are probably 30 different investors in that, but all you'll see is Attorney XYZ
Okay.
as the agent for it. So you're only going to find out as much as those investors want you to know.
Okay, so they want to be private.
But we will get demonstration of financial ability to build the building before we transfer the property to them.
Oh, that's key. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Nichols? I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button.
Thank you, Mayor. It is interesting to me that everybody, most everybody agrees that we want to learn more about these new developers. And yet, we're going to move forward, full steam ahead. The mayor mentioned One Menasha Center and LLCs in general. Anytime we've had a development agreement in the time that I've been up here, somebody's always been in the gallery, the spokesperson for that LLC, taking questions from us. And tonight seems to be different for some reason. So it's just not how we do business here. It's not transparent. And we owe it to our community to make sure that we do our due diligence. We should make sure that they're financially capable before we even enter into an agreement with them. So, for those reasons, lack of transparency and not the common order of business around here, I won't be supporting this amendment this evening.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote on the First Amendment.
Motion carries six-two.
Item O is adjournment. Oh, item N is public comments. I'm sorry. Did you wish to make any other public comments this evening? Seeing, seeing no other people wishing to make public comments, do we have a motion to adjourn? So, motion a second. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.